Hello everyone, this is your favorite host Amber Viola. Welcome back to Politics But Make It Fashion. This week I have a special guest who is also running for city council here in Scranton, Pennsylvania. His name is Frankie. I've actually known Frankie for, I think, a couple of years because he worked with my mother on a few campaigns and things like that. So when I heard that he was running for office, of course, I wanted to chat with him and reach out. So hello Frankie and welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for having me Amber.
Absolutely. So how were you, um, first of all, you know, how have you just found the running for office thing? Like is it, has it been everything you've hoped and dreamed up?
Yeah, let's, let's jump right into that.
Right.
There's a culture of a good old boys' club in local politics here. In Lackawanna County specifically broadly, but Scranton specifically as well. There are folks running to create local political dynasties. You know, something that I'm not cool with, with a motivating factor for why I jumped in in the first place. But they play some of the dirtiest games. They tried getting me thrown off the ballot. They got the current council president thrown, uh, you know, to resign his nomination for Democratic Party. And then, you know, lawyers going after Todd, you know, so. It seems to me that, you know, the more people that are getting attacked by these lawyers, you know, you should probably, you know, be looking into, you know.
Be looking at who's doing it.
Exactly.
Right, and the Todd he mentioned is um, an episode that will be right before this one. He is somebody else who is running on a Democratic ticket um, for one of the city council seats. You brought up the petitions. So can you explain to people what the petition process is for when you are running for of office?
Absolutely, um, so the very first thing that you have to do when you're running for office is collect signatures. Whether you're running as one of the two main parties in Democratic, Democratic Party or the Republican Party. Uh, they have a certain requirement that's written into law for how many signatures you have to collect. School board, that's ten folks from the party for city council, it's a hundred and then it goes up there. Believe it's two fifty for state representative, um, somewhere in that ballpark. For independent, I believe it's ten percent of the vote from the last election for the seat. So if you're trying to run, you have longer actually as an independent. You have from the end of the closing period for the main two parties up until about August. So there may still be folks jumping into this race, um, and you know, races across country.
Right.
But for the Scr- the Scranton City uh, council races, you need a hundred votes. A hundred signatures. To be able to appear onto the ballot. Um, you only have three weeks to collect it for when you're running in one of the main two parties. So it's a tight schedule.
Right, right, so basically, um, what happens is a lot of the people who are running, you'll get your little sheet um, that you'll fill out and then you basically will go around and collect signatures. Um, you obviously have to get it from like registered voters, um, from people who are of that party. And their, and people who live in your, your uh, district and things like that. So there are some requirements with that. But I mean, it's a lot of footwork and you walk around and you, you know, do little meetups and you try to get all your signatures. And once you do that, then you'll officially be able to be on the ballot. Once they go over your signatures, make sure everything's like, you know, good to go and stuff like that. It's, I feel like it's an easy process, but a hard process.
No one actually looks over your signatures unless you're challenged.
Oh, okay, so I didn't know that.
After you submit your uh, signatures, there's a period where folks are allowed to challenge signatures. And what that looks like is you have to go to court. One of the other candidates in this race, uh, I'm gonna name him Sean McAndrew. Um, running for school, is a school board member, um, and decided not to file under his name, but under one of his buddies. The only reason that I found out that it was actually him was that his buddy that was testifying had to leave court to go pick up his kid from school. So the lawyer had to call Sean McAndrew in case he had to testify for any of the other. Yeah.
Do you think that there should be somebody or a committee or something who would look over the signatures just in general? Even if they're not challenged?
I personally think that if someone wants to be on the ballot, they should be on the ballot.
Right, I kind of, I, yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think that it's the most democratic way of doing it. Um, that by like opening access, it allows, you know, working class people to run because a lot of people don't know how to access, you know, the list. There's like all this software behind the scenes that, you know, I have years of experience using uh, as a political organizer. Um, so I was able to jump in, make lists, you know, say Patty's Day Parade. But usually.
And the list he's talking about, you can get list of like your registered voters, um, list of like inactive voters. I believe are people who's like registered but haven't voted in a while. And so there's different ways that you can narrow it down so that you are focusing on the exact demographic that you need to get your signatures. And that can be really challenging for a lot of people, especially if you don't know a lot of the who's who kind of, kind of of the area. So then you do have a lot of people door knocking and just trying to get signatures from people. And to me, that's how it can get screwed up, not on purpose, just because, you know, hey, are, are you registered signing? You know, and people will sign your stuff, trying to help you out. And then you find out down the road like they weren't actually eligible to do that. So I, I do agree, I think that opening the process would help and actually have a lot more people who are probably better um, running for, for local offices.
Yeah, and it, you know, it's a class discrimination usually, you know. Um, people, you know, who are on working class backgrounds usually aren't involved in politics. You know, the families aren't involved in politics. So there's a hurdle there and then from, you know, the costs associated uh, can be, you know, overwhelming for a lot of folks. Um, so there's a whole bunch of barriers that like prevent working class people from running. Um, but knowing the ins and outs of it, having a little bit of support, community and family, um, you know, I was able to make it work.
Yeah, so what do you feel like to you, a council person would does? And what is exactly their kind of job? Because I, I talked to, uh, we're kind of in the same field. I talked to a lot of people, I talked to a lot of voters. And I find that a lot of people do not understand some of the um, basic things that we have in place with our voting systems are just kind of like what people's job is. I truly believe politics is local and these are the people who really make the biggest impact. So explain to people kind of what, what that is.
So I'm gonna answer from the end first.
Okay.
Yes, local is, you know, everything. Not quite these days, these days federal government are having a bigger, bigger impact on our lives. Especially with, you know, maybe some things are a little bit less seen, but when, you know, rights are starting to get stripped and uh, taken away from you, um, from the federal level, that has a real, real impact on a lot of people's lives. Um, but generally, yeah, a, a lot of stuff is on, on the local level. I am coming at this from a community organizing perspective. I've spent the last several years as a community organizer right here in Scranton, you know, trying to build working class power for my community. I'm seeing that I wanna take this to the next level of building power and actually taking power. Um, and that is happens through politics. Politics is, uh, you know, the distribution of power and resources. Who has the power and where the resource is going? And for a part of the resources have not been going to the pot. So I see this as a way of, you know, building that working class power here in Scranton. Not, you know, just for me, not just for my family, but for all of us. Um, all of us that struggle, you know, day to day to, you know, put food on the table to support ourselves and our families. So city council makes, you know, municipal laws, local government laws. Then, you know, they go to the mayor for approval. We have a stronger mayoral system in uh, Scranton specifically. Um, but they do still pass ordinances and whatnot in city council, all the budgeting in the city council. Um, so that, that's, you know, where you're spending the dollars. Which is hugely impactful. There's, there's, I'm sure so much that has gone in there, I really have to take like a full deeper dive. The city's finances and budgets, um, but I'm pretty good with numbers, so.
And you are able to, um, and this is probably something that I, a lot of people don't realize. When you're speaking of budgets, you're able to go look at them. You're able to, you know, look them up online. I actually, our city of Scranton website, um, I worked for the mayor of Scranton right now, the mayor, uh, Mayor Paige Cognetti. I worked with her um, at the beginning of her, her term. And one of the things she did was she really focused on kind of like trying to revamp the website. Cause politics is also very like old and, and uses old things. And one thing I do, the website is very user friendly and you can go in and you can look at everything. You can look at the, the meetings, you can look at old ordinances, you're able to look at the budgets, you're able to look at old budgets. Now, are you gonna understand everything? I don't know, but you are able to go through and look at that. And I think that also can be a barrier for people because they don't know where to access that information. And so because you were a community organizer, you already, you've already seen where the money's going and where the money's not going. You may not have known specifically what the numbers were, but you know, this organization's getting help. These people aren't getting help and, you know, these people, they're saying they're helping them, but they're not. So I, I think that's something really important for, for people to know.
Yeah, and when the, the superbowl, so like since I've like announced into this race and like started like connecting some strings from like, oh, this person owns this company and is connected to this person and, you know, it, it's kind of a cesspool to be honest. Um, we, we, we have some great people here, um, that, you know, in government, but we have some like really not so great people. Our mayor before this one is, you know, in jail for selling out our municipal parking authority to a private corporation, you know, stripping those resources, you know, from us as a community and giving them into private hands, you know, and we have to deal with the repercussions for another fifteen years.
Yeah. That's crazy and um, I know that parking um, in the city of Scranton is, is a big issue, especially um, parking downtown. I know that when I, when I worked there, the employees um, did not have parking spots. So if you were a director, I was a director, so I had a parking spot, but the other employees in my office did not have parking spots and they had to pay to park. And I thought that was the stupidest thing I've ever heard in my life. And it was absolutely atrocious and disgusting to me, especially because there's people that work there that make under forty thousand dollars a year. Okay, and now these people have to take their little tiny paycheck that they're making and pay monthly fees to private garages and things around so that they can literally pay to park to go to work. So whoever decided to do that whole contract, it's like, and, and that's not even the people who don't work there, you know, those are the actual, actual workers. But I know for, for me, I used to work at the mall back in the day at Hollister. And you had to pay to park if you were employee, I could not afford to park. So I found all the little cheat spots around town to be able to park my car. But when you have to pay to park, it keeps people out of, you know, the things that are going on. I saw you, I, I believe I've seen you that first Friday um, before. And um, and one of the things about that is, you know, people won't come down to local businesses and walk around if they have to, you know, pay to park because they can't afford to. And I don't think people really realize that. The people who are above our pay grades, you know.
I think that we're like dancing around an issue here, you know. They're, they're, the, the city tried to institute something uh, there for this exact issue, which is the, the, the trolley. The, the bus goes around from a location to a place location. It's, we need to expand public transportation.
Oh, yes.
Um, our, you know, we, we, we have some buses, I've, I've taken the Colts buses from time to time when I've needed it. Um, and I've been grateful for it to be there, but unfortunately, you know, ending at six P M is not convenient for working class folks. Um, if, you know.
Damn, I didn't, I know the schedule's crazy, I did not know that it ended at six P M. Um, how did you find it as reliability as far as time goes? Cause I know a lot of people who need to take the bus have actually been fired because they were never making it to work on time because the bus was always iffy.
Yeah, I, I'm born and raised in Brooklyn, New York and, you know, world-class public transportation, um, trains run, you know, at longest time between a typical train, you know, is half an hour in the middle of the night. Between two and two thirty in the morning, those kinds of hours. Um, and we'd be lucky to get buses that often. Um, so from, from my remembrance, it's, it's been a little while, but it, the buses run about once an hour. We're the electric city and we called the electric city because we had the first electric trolley system. We had world-class public transportation system in the eighteen eighties. You know, like, might not have been eighteen eighties, but around that era, like.
Right.
Well, by the nineteen hundreds, we had a, a huge public transporta- transportation uh, that ran on electricity, you know.
So what are we doing?
Yeah, exactly, um, my pie in the sky goal for um, the city is to bring back uh, the, the trolley system. What, what had happened, a quick history lesson, um, the motor companies, uh, like the, the car companies, GM, Ford, started buying up public transportation systems and converting the electric trolleys type systems, rail systems into tire system, uh, you know, car systems, you know, systems that, you know, they worked with. Um, as a way to, you know, increase their productions. By like, you know, putting our, privatizing our resources and putting them into, you know, private companies, uh, personal piggy banks, um, has shown time and time again, you know.
Yeah, and there's a high percentage of, somebody just gave the percent of people in Scranton that don't drive or don't have cars. I can't.
It's like one fifth.
It's, it's a lot. Yeah, 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 um, it's a lot and I didn't, I didn't know that. I'm actually one of, I do, I have a car. But um, I got really sick um, as a disabled veteran and so I wasn't really able to drive. And so for me, I, luckily Scranton is very small, so I'll Uber around and it's honestly, it's like five dollars for me to, you know, kind of go from here to there. And, or you can, you know, walk, but I've never even tried to take, to take the bus system because I've just heard so many um, crazy things about it. But, you know, there's a lot of people who, we have a great little city and it's more walkable than other places. I will say that, and so because of that, you do have, yeah, you do have a lot of people who do not drive. And I don't, I don't think that's something that's really being um, being spoken about.
Yeah, and on, on top of like, just like local public transportation, I also think that we need, like we're getting a train to New York, you know, it looks like it's in the final stages of like budgeting and planning. You know, they're building the last thirteen miles of rail to connect it in over the Delaware Water Gap. But we need a train to Wilkes-Barre.
Right, right.
We need a train to Wilkes-Barre that should probably stop in Pittston at least on the way. Um, that, you know, is, is a regional rail line that runs up and down the valley, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ideally from, you know, the bottom of Wilkes-Barre, I don't know, maybe Sugar Notch or something like that. All the way up to um, Carbondale is, is something that we should do and I'm sure the rail.
Yeah, yeah. That's a great idea and it would help veterans too. Um, we have a very high elderly population here and we also have a very high veteran population here. And um, we have a, a VA hospital that is in Wilkes-Barre. Um, I'm located in Scranton, so about twenty-five minutes away. Um, also my mom who you worked with uses the VA system and she's about an hour away. And so there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of people who need it. And if there was a, a little way for you to get back and forth between Scranton and Wilkes-Barre, that would help a lot of, a lot of veterans and, and things like that, so that, that would be amazing.
Yeah, I, I, I just think that currently Democrats for the large, for a large part are lacking vision. At least elected Democrats and the base are yearning for, you know, hope and change that we were promised in two thousand and eight. Um, you know, been waiting since two thousand and eight for that, you know, hope and change. And you can only hold out hope for so long.
Right.
I try to keep, you know, like a good optimism, you know, the moral arc of the universe is long but bends towards justice. So, um, you know, like how people might say that the earth is flat because it, the arc is so long, you might not be able to see it.
We might not be able to see it, we're gonna, we're gonna get there guys, we're gonna. And I think because of that lack of hope, that's where the Republicans and MAGA have been able to come in because they are offering change. Is it good change? No, but it is change and people want change. And so that trickles down into then areas like ours because we have an immigrant population. We have um, a good amount of Latinos here. And that trickles down to where people now, because they want change and are listening to these things, they're focusing on, okay, well, if we get rid of these people, then change will happen. It will, it will help me. And that is one of the reasons why they are have gained so much traction and their voices are getting so loud because they are offering change. Now, we know it's not good change and it wouldn't be good change for anybody who's not white and straight. But people are yearning for that and we do want Democrats to like do something. Um, even just saying something with the things that are happening right now, I've been going to school councils, um, school, not school board meetings, but the, what is it called, like PTA? And, you know, parents are scared and there's, and you know, and crying and kids are scared. And what local politician has come out and said, hey guys, I know you're scared, I don't have the answer, but I know you're scared and I'm listening to you and I'm willing to try to help wherever I can. You know what I mean? You don't need to have all the answers, but there's literally not been anybody coming out and saying that, you know? And even talking to you, um, talking to other people who are also running, it's like you guys are saying things that we're all saying, but nobody who's elected has been saying that, you know, like, who's elected right now in our area who's talking about helping people who don't drive and public transportation? And people not being able to uh, afford to park and, you know, when you're focusing on housing, focusing on people buying houses when we can't afford our rent here, you know? We could do simple things like rent control for our area. What are y'all doing? Nothing, who's talking about it? Nobody.
So I got, I got a great plan for housing, I love that you brought this up. I wanna radically rethink local public housing. Basically since the neoliberal era with Reagan and Thatcher, um, they've started decimating the public uh, housing sector in, you know, not just America, but around the world. There are cities like Vienna where sixty percent of residents that like the housing stock is owned by the government. Sixty percent. That means that it's incredibly affordable to live in Vienna. So, um, what happens, what I wanna do is I wanna expand the Scranton Housing Authority. Um, I want them to be able to start, you know, taking over condemned properties from out of state landlords that, you know, forgot about the property.
Cause they don't care about their fine, that little thousand dollar fine or whatever y'all trying to impose on him. All they do is they write a check and they pay it, they do not care, it's not doing anything.
Yep, so I, I want the city to take control of these houses, they usually only need a couple of thousands of dollars in there. You know, it's a jobs program, you know, it puts people to work for constructing, rebuilding our city. Our city used to house over two hundred thousand people, we're down to seventy-five thousand people. We have plenty of room to build here, that's not the issue. Um, we need to, this also, you know, because the city is owning these properties, there's no profit motive that needs to be cleaned from this, which drives rent costs down. The more that the city is investing in the housing stock, the lower prices can get for everyone else because then private landlords have to compete with uh, public rent prices.
Right.
So it, it's not, you know, something that like I just came out of in my head like,
Right.
why don't we do more public housing? Why don't we, you know, as the city, if it's, you know, single family homes, you know, if it's big enough, split it, make it a half a double, you know, that's the type of housing stock that we have here anyways from like these giant collars that were made, you know, in some section of the neighborhood that, you know, can very comfortably fit two families in. Um, I, I, you know, we can radically rethink how we're doing this. Like you said, rent freezes. Limit the amount that your rent can go up year by year.
Yeah, and also when it can go up, because your rent should not just be able to go up in the middle of the week because your landlord texted you or your landlord sent you an email and said your rent is going up four hundred dollars, which happened.
My, my brother-in-law and I were talking about this just last week. He rent, started renting a place a few months ago and then like a new property manager comes in and like, oh, that contract that you signed was null and void and you have to sign this contract now. And the, that contract, you know, was for Gacy, was like with the other property manager that, you know, gave him like a runaround, which like I was like, bro, they, they were not, you know, the, you did not have to sign a new contract, like you had it at least for a year.
That was valid, yeah.
Yep, um, so like they, there's all these like shady moves, you know, that are done through like layers of like LLC owning an LLC owning, you know, in a Delaware company that you can't find the owner's name that, you know, goes out and like rents.
People can't even find out who they need to contact to get things fixed.
Yep.
You know, they don't even, they have a house and they need heat and they don't even have a way to contact their, their actual landlord or the company.
And then, and then you can't report that to the city either because then it's considered uninhabitable in the winter and you get evicted.
And you don't have a home, right.
Exactly, so you're screwed for trying to, you know, get your landlord to do the right thing and, you know, provide heating in the winter.
And there needs to be protections for you for retaliation because there's landlords who will, I've seen it here, retaliate against you because you said, hey, my heat is broke, I need my heat fixed. And now you're evicted, so, you know, there needs to be protection for that as well because people are scared to even say anything, that's why there's places that are uninhabitable where you have people living because it gets to, you know, it just piles on, it just piles on and piles on.
Yeah, I. I'm gonna use this to pivot, um, it, it, when things keep piling on, piling on, you know, it, you, you start getting like, you know, it wears on your mental health, you know, po- poverty, you know, is stressful for.
Yeah. Yeah. And I did hear, I did hear about that because I, I am a social worker, so I love that idea. Right. Wow. Right, because people have this idea in their head that like, you're calling a social worker to come like our, you know, end an armed standoff. Like, no, we are calling when somebody like that little autistic boy that just got shot up like eleven times last week um, for situations like that, for when you know somebody is having mental health issues, for a fact. And that's when you need somebody to be able to escalate the situation and help, not unload a clip. I, I also agree with that, but, but you know, we gotta get the. I I also agree with that, but but you know, we gotta get the. Yeah, yeah. Well, and and because honestly, as a social worker. We are not allowed to beat people up. We are not allowed to kill people. We're not allowed to do that. People will lay hams on you. Um I worked at C I C here in Scranton Community Intervention Center and I saw. Uh uh you know, incidences between workers and, you know, the clients and stuff. And you have to learn how to de-escalate a situation without. Getting physical with somebody and, you know, learning restraint. Moves and learning different things, but learning how to protect yourself and also protect your client. Because as a social worker, if somebody attacks me and I just decide to, you know, beat the crap out of them and, oh, I was in fear for my life. I would be in jail, you know, so, so I think I do agree with that. I think that social workers are already kind of trained. To deal with that. You have people working in like, you know, mental hospitals and different things and they're not allowed to like, you know, do those things either and they have to learn how to de-escalate. Those situations and I think that is, you know, very, very important. They do, right? Without killing people, without killing people, guys. Right. 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 Right, and if there, and people should be able to have access to those things. And I mean, obviously, and especially like say, like city council. You know, if there's an incident that happens, that local city council should be able to have access to that body cam footage. And be able to go over it, you know, and and certain things. And I do understand. Always not being able to release things immediately, especially due to investigations happening and all that stuff. Right, but there are people who are are already sworn, you know, uh electors and stuff. They can't go out and run their mouth. So there's, those are people who are already in place who could. Look over that and saying like, nah, y'all this, this isn't right. We need to, you know, take a step forward and things like that. And that's why, you know, we need good people on these little local elected things because, you know, that happened. Right down the road from us. And I remember there was one in Stroudsburg, um a boy named Christian. Um who got, who got shot by the, yeah, who got shot by the police as well. And I think there was a, right, yeah. Yeah, it was wild. Um and he was clearly having a a mental health crisis and that was, you know, obvious and things like that and. And they just killed him, you know, and and it was a fight for the family and everybody to even get the information. I remember actually, um Representative Kenyatta came up here to a march, um cuz that's actually where I met him at. Um to help try to, you know, um fight for, I mean, Ben Crump might have been up here as well too. So, but yeah, I, these things are happening all over the place and and we definitely need to have. People in place. So for you, the, um, I guess one of the last questions I'll ask you is what are. Why should people support you and what is something that you wanna see happen? If you get elected that could just happen, you know, right away, without like having to build new infrastructure, like, you know, whatever. You, you can't. Also, where can they find you on uh social media as well? Great, thank you so much. Um I've really enjoyed this conversation. I I feel like I've learned. Um things from you that I that I didn't know. And I feel like this is such, we need down-to-earth politicians who are are working class people who understand. The needs of our community. So uh voter registration ends, I believe, May fifth. Um make sure you guys get out to vote on May twentieth. If you are not registered, make sure you go register, make sure you check out where your polling place is, make sure. Yes, yes, um. If you need to change your voter registration to vote in a primary, which is what I've had to do before and it's super fun. You can also do that before the deadline ends and then you can change it back. Um I feel like not a lot of people are probably willing to do that or really know that you can do this. I think that's definitely something a little bit more plugged in, people know, but. If you guys need help with voter registration, please reach out. Make sure you contact Frankie on his social or website. We will also be doing rides to the polls again this year. So, um I'm looking forward to that. So thank you so much for joining us and thank you guys for joining us on another episode of. Politics, but make it fashion and we will chat soon.